Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome back again. Today is Monday, July 21st, 2025. I'd like to call the order, the public hearing for the Pittsburgh Public Schools. Before we get started, as we do each time, I want to clarify how the process works. Ms. Erica Gandy will moderate tonight's meeting. Each speaker will have three minutes. If you are in person, when your three minutes is expiring, the red light will blink on your microphone. If you are testifying virtually, we will put the hands raised signal up to let you know that you have 30 seconds left. Speakers will be called one at a time, and you may not share your time with any other speaker. Let's see. As we have done in the past, persons who are here to testify in person will go first, followed by the rest of our virtual testimonies. And let me think. This testimony, this hearing tonight, it is pretty open, so we like you to talk about things that are on the legislative agenda, but there are no real restrictions for this portion of the testimony, which is a little different than we did for our previous special public hearing. And finally, if you can't attend in person or watch virtually, you can see the recording that will be posted to our district website tomorrow. Those who would like to watch right now can go onto the district homepage. There's a link at the top of the page. And along with our video tomorrow, we will also post any written testimony that was submitted ahead of time. And with that, I will turn the meeting over to Ms. Gandy, so she can call our first reader.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. And tonight, this evening, our first speaker is Toni Allen.
Hello, my name is Toni Allen, Student Achievement Center, AKA The Baxter Building. I am not here this evening to advocate for a building. We know the building's antiquated. We know that it is not ADA compliant. We know we need an elevator, and we also know there's some work that needs to be done, and the district doesn't have the money to do it. I'm here today to advocate for the programming, the unique programming that exists only in the Baxter Building. The first one is the overage program. The overage program, nobody wants a 15-year-old in the seventh or the eighth grade. So the overage program gives the student an opportunity to make up two years and one year, and then hopefully they get put up into their correct grade or close enough to their age. The second program in the building is the credit recovery program. And the credit recovery program is open to every single high school student in the district that needs to make up credits so they can graduate on time. The students that we get have gotten straight east their freshman year, some their sophomore year, some their junior year, and some all three years. Their homeschool's not going to catch them up. Period 10 is not going to catch them up. So they come to us, and what's going to happen is that they're going to get frustrated, they're not going to have any hope, they're going to drop out, they're going to go to our competitors, and we're going to pay our competitors to educate our students that we can educate ourselves. Or they're going to go get a GED. The third program in the building is the Special 12 Program for our fifth-year seniors. We don't want our students to go 13 years of education and then go get a GED. We want them to get a high school diploma. So I'm here today to say, please, do not throw the baby out with the bathwater, because some of these students will not have a high school diploma if it was not for the Student Achievement Center and the programs that we offer there. So I'm here to say, you could put the programs in another building, because the end result is, it's needed in this district. If it wasn't needed in the district, then all the students will remain in their home schools, and they will graduate from their home schools. But obviously, it's needed in the district. So keep the programming, just put it in another school. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And our next speaker is Roman Reinheimer. We'll move to the next speaker, Vanessa Degavere.
Hi. I wanted to thank the four board directors who voted no, which represented the concern that the vast majority has about this reckless plan to close so many schools without the necessary information. I was disappointed but not surprised that the hearings will be held smack in the middle of summer, when many families are away and disengaged in this process. The timing is no coincidence, just like the attempt last year or the ERS vote during teacher negotiations. It is also no surprise that the hearings are going to be held here in this building instead of the buildings that will close, which you would have a much higher turnout, which clearly you don't want. The special interest group that largely controls the board spent $15,000 on gaining even more control over the PPS school board. If your goal is to dismantle a public service, it's a good idea to have a thoughtful plan in place to ensure equity and maintain community, let alone academic success, instead of burning it to the ground. Rolling out a red carpet for charters that are grossly unregulated and cost the taxpayer more money is incredibly irresponsible. Public schools are for everyone. They don't cherry pick the way the charters do. Our national democracy has been bought and sold by lobbyists and special interest groups. It's an absolute shame to see this abuse of money and power in our local government.
Thank you for your testimony. And our next speaker is Jaslyn Worthy.
My name is Jaslyn Worthy, and I'm the proud mother of children who attend Wool Slayer Elementary and Kappa Middle School. Tonight, I'm not speaking to the school board, because frankly, they've made it very clear that they're not listening to us. Because, I mean, come on now. Like, we've been up here, we've been talking, and clearly, they're not saying anything that we want to hear, they're not listening. So, you know, I'm speaking to the community members, I'm speaking to the parents, I'm speaking, I'm speaking to y'all tonight. Community members, stakeholders, in this room who are watching, those who are watching, the families who show up because we care deeply about our kids and we're tired of being ignored. I am a black woman raising black children in this district, and let's be honest, when they talk about school closures, it's our children, right? It's the children who look like mine, who get hit the hardest. We're told it's about budgets, but this is about people, about children's safety, stability, and opportunity. These decisions aren't neutral, they're harmful, and we are watching. I am beyond fed up with the incompetence, some of y'all, the empty promises, and the blatant disregard for our voices. But more importantly, I want you all to know that I see you, that I hear you, and that I stand with you. If you are angry, be angry. If you're exhausted, you are not alone. But don't leave that frustration at the podium, use it. Talk to the parents sitting next to you, share your story, exchange numbers, build something, because we cannot afford to fight this alone. This district may not value our voices, but we can amplify each other. We can demand better. We can teach our children not to tolerate being pushed aside. Our kids matter. Our communities matter, and we will not be silent. This is just their decision, this isn't just their decision, excuse me, it's ours. It's our community, it's our schools, it's our children. So if you're a parent, now's the time to stand up and be loud about it. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker, Denise Tyler.
How dare you not give parents a choice as to where we want to send our children? I'm sure you had a choice as to where to send your children to school. Is it a good idea to get rid of magnetists at the elementary and middle school level and redo attendance zones? You want us to believe that closing magnetist schools is a good thing because it promotes equity? Think about this. You were pulling some of the students from the top-performing schools in the district to now attend some of the lower or lowest-performing schools in the district because of these changes. Are we to believe that once these changes occur, our children will magically receive the same quality and equitable education on day one? If it is going to be equity across our schools, then why get rid of the magnet programs and redraw the feeder program? Why not see what's making some schools more successful than others and replicate what's being done at the successful schools in order to make other schools just as successful? Instead, it seems you are dismantling the successful schools because other schools aren't as successful. All schools are going to be equal, right? So it shouldn't matter if students attend their home school or magnetist, because according to your plan, they will all receive the same quality education. I know, it sounds good. Are we supposed to wait years until that happens while our children's education suffers in the meantime? Do you honestly think our schools will not be in disarray at the start of the 26, 27 school year with all but three schools of programs undergoing some type of change in Phase 1? Class sizes will be larger and stress teachers due to having more responsibilities in our new classrooms and new buildings while making sure we meet the needs of all students, including those with IEPs, GIEPs, and everything in between. Do you want us to believe teachers are going to be able to consistently give the students the same enriched and high-quality lessons they received at the gifted center while teaching all other levels of academic instruction in one classroom setting? Because according to most of you, closing a gifted center where students receive these additional enrichment lessons is a good idea. Now, back to the Student Achievement Center. You're closing the district's only credit recovery school. Are we just hoping these students are successful by attempting to make up only two credits per year, or do we not care if they are successful or not? There is no way you should take this opportunity away from the students who need it most. We owe it to them to keep their chances of graduating well within reach. This plan is a impractical, unrealistic rush into the detriment of our students' education. I hope you're able to live with your decisions that will cause PPS to lose families and students, which in turn will cause teachers, custodians, nurses, social workers, counselors, parists, secretarial staff, SDSSs, cafeteria workers, school security, school police, and administrators their jobs, while those who don't work inside the school's jobs probably won't be affected at all. Remember this, we as parents will not continue to let you play Russian roulette with our children's education. If you don't give us a choice, we will go elsewhere to be given a choice, because as I stated in my earlier testimony, we all know nothing we say is going to change your decision. Your minds are made up, that was evident in the voting. I'm done wasting my time.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker this evening is Shirley Anne Hill.
I have followed the public hearings regarding the unfair treatment of former Montessori teacher Ms. Stephanie Lepine by Principal Kelly Meyer. Throughout my 41-year career with PPS, I too was subjected to talk to principals like her. In December of 2023, Ms. Stephanie Lepine was removed from her classroom by Kelly Meyer. Ms. Stephanie Lepine was cleared in February of 2024, but was conveniently transferred to another school that does not have a Montessori program. Why is Kelly Meyer not being held accountable for her unfair treatment of Ms. Stephanie Lepine, the only Lee Black teacher? Ms. Stephanie Lepine will be starting, oh, because you chose to completely, and I underline and bold it, completely ignore Kelly Meyer's toxic behavior, Ms. Stephanie Lepine will be starting her own Montessori school, you know? Once again, another awesome black teacher leaves PPS because you continue, you continue to enable this type of toxic leadership, which has been extended to the parents slash guardian. I question how students are first when you do not hold Kelly Meyer accountable for her actions. Following Ms. Tyler, I am appalled that the Student Achievement Center is on the chopping block. This school offers our kids so much that credit recovery can't come close to it. It's like comparing a Fred Flintstone car to a Mercedes. While at Carrick, I can say credit recovery was dismal. Students start dropping off even before the nice weather came about. Carrick High School has a very small percentage of black teachers. I quote, "Recent studies have demonstrated that black students who are exposed to black teachers have a much greater chance of academic success," end quote. This is from Connect Magazine, September 27th, 2024, "Black Students Act: Carrick Matter." Question I have, what's the rationale behind the virtual public hearing speakers going after the in-person speakers? Please return to the original format, where it did not make a difference which option you selected to speak at the public hearing. I'm done.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Tiara Hardy. We'll move to the next speaker, Ann Ferris.
Hi, I am Ann Ferris, a PPS parent living on the North Side. Director Walker said in a recorded interview, I believe on July 1st, with Black Women for Better Education, that there are folks out there that have opposed us the whole way, and they will say and do anything to get you to be outraged and upset with us. Yes, I am outraged, and I believe that many of us share the same outrage at a system that has failed so many students, many of the reasons being beyond the district level and out of our control. I want to be excited about this plan, just like you, Mr. Walker and Dr. Walters. I want to be, believe in a reimagining of the district that will bring families to Pittsburgh and bring an investment into public education in our district, city, state, and country. But when we stand up here and ask questions and are only given equity as the answer, and here you say your job is to understand the what and leave the how up to the superintendent who has zero district reconfiguring experience, I am outraged with those who voted to move forward with the school closure process. I am outraged at being accused of spreading misinformation, because I also am concerned about the future of Pittsburgh Public Schools. Director Walker, you said last week, there are unfortunately folks that are trying to sow some distrust and chaos into this process by putting misinformation out there. No one needed to do anything to sow distrust. The plan was presented to a community with no trust in the district, a community whose overwhelming response has been, they will do what they want. Dr. Walters and you have continued to prove them right. This is what the community sees. Those people doing whatever they can are the people watching the board meetings, reading draft after draft of the facility's plans, engaging with you all through emails, social media posts, and these testimonies. And it's we who you label as the loud few, which, as an introvert, I actually think is pretty cool. If, and again, your words, every voice matters, everybody has to show up, why do you say the people using their voice are the ones sowing distrust and chaos into this process? Even with a theoretically democratic board, this process is politicized. Where is the political pressure coming from? Why is it so powerful that the Board of Directors are willing to move forward with a plan that they have publicly said will not save money with no reason other than equity that has not been backed up by models for success, data, or measurable goals, aside from saying this enables the district to have what is legally required anyway in every school by the state of Pennsylvania? Future-ready seems to mean get ready for Pittsburgh Public Schools to be reduced to an all charter and voucher system of education. Does that improve student outcomes? Good night.
Thank you for your testimony. And our next speaker is Emily Sawyer.
I am unprepared and was late and, you know, all those things that tend to happen. But I did want to talk today about something that I wrote to you all about last month, and this will seem unrelated, maybe, but it's not. So I want to talk about Policy 802.1, you guys approved it a couple months ago. It's abdicating your responsibility to leave equity out of the policies that you approve. I know you want the superintendent to take care of it in the administrative regulations, but that's not actually how this usually works. And according to your own policy, it is your job to take equity into account when you review and propose and pass policy. Policy 802, which is the one right before 802.1 in the book, states, "The board has the authority to and shall consider whether to accept gifts, grants, and donations made to the school district or to any school in the district." So that's absolutely your job. "The board reserves the right to refuse to accept any gift, grant, or donation that does not contribute toward the achievement of the goals of the school district, or when such ownership would adversely affect the district." If you do not track, report, and grant or not grant, accept or not accept these gifts based on equity, they will not be accepted or not accepted based on equity. They will just be given to whoever happens to get the money, and we all know how that rolls. If you just let the river flow, we all know what direction it flows in. This is really important. It will not matter, we have tried closing schools before. We can't just talk about equity. It can't just be what you say when you want to do things and then what you ignore when you don't want to do things. It's really important that you actually do the work of equity. So you also have Policy 102.5, Equity and Excellence in Education, which is in response to an ongoing MOU, 33 years ongoing by the by. 33 years, we have not been meeting our responsibility to black students in this district. The purpose in 102.5, Equity and Excellence in Education, the concept of educational equity goes beyond formal equality, where all students are treated the same. It goes to fostering a barrier-free environment for all students, so that all students have the opportunity to benefit equally. I'm quoting from the policy that this board passed in response to an MOU that we have never met, 33 years. It is the right of every student, this is more quoting from the policy, to have an equitable educational experience within the school district of Pittsburgh. If you don't pass equitable policies, how will that happen? This is the work. Closing schools is the easy thing to do, or else school districts wouldn't do it all the time.
Thank you for your testimony. And now we will move over to our virtual testimonies. And next, our next speaker is Cara Britannic.
Hi, my name is Cara Britannic, and I'm the mom of a rising first grader at Pittsburgh Montessori. As in my previous testimonies, I'm here to talk about the outdated and flawed data that you continue to use in your analyses as you make important decisions about our school district. You continue to ask us to reimagine the district, where every student has access to art, music, foreign language, a library, and other enriching programs, and I can support you in that vision. But what I'm asking of you is to reimagine how the data is being collected, calculated, and analyzed, so that we can make that vision a reality. In the feasibility report presentation, I was happy to hear that the facilities team conducted walkthroughs of the buildings to collect updated data. I know the summarized data is available on the website, but why don't we have access to the detailed worksheets for each building? For some reason, they're only available for schools on the North Side. When I asked Dr. Walters and Mr. McNamara to make those detailed worksheets available to the community, I learned that walkthroughs were not conducted at the buildings slated for closure. This is deeply concerning, considering the previous walkthroughs were done over nine years ago. These are important and impactful decisions that you're tasked with making. Don't you want the most updated and detailed data available to you, or is your mind already made up? Because that's the perception we have, and this is not how you try to regain our trust in the process. Next, you define functional capacity as the total number of students a school can hold based on only standard classrooms. This verbiage was taken directly from the district website, and this is a definition that you've been using since 2008, that's 17 years ago. But let's dig into this further, because on the detailed worksheets from the facility walkthroughs that I could find, and the ones from 2016, you've also included the capacities of the small classrooms in your total capacity number. So what's the actual definition? Just standard classrooms or any room that can hold people? Because this makes a huge difference in functional capacity. And on the topic of rooms, can we acknowledge that a school doesn't need to have specialized spaces, like an art room with a kiln or a music room with built-in risers, in order to have enriching art and music programs, especially at the elementary level? Schools just need a space like a standard classroom to house them. But if we're not setting aside those spaces when determining functional capacity, how can you be sure those programs can be offered? Now's the time to reimagine how functional capacity is being calculated. Coupled with correcting the rounding errors that another community member brought to light at last month's hearing, these are the only ways to ensure that all the promises you're making to us about improved course offerings and consistent access to programs across schools can actually be realized.
Thank you for your testimony. And our next speaker is Valerie Webb-Armen.
They're going to do what they want anyways. This is the most common thing I hear when I'm talking to parents about changes proposed by the district. They feel like you don't care about what they want for their kids, you're just going to do what you want to do regardless. I have been battling that phrase and the apathy that accompanies it for over a decade here at PPS. I typically would counter with, "Your voice still matters," or, "No, they listen," or even silence is consent, don't let them think that it's all okay if you have concerns. But with the carelessness of the planning around the closure hearings, I really am deeply feeling that specific people, namely Jean Walker and Dr. Walters, are literally doing whatever they want anyways. Members of this board specifically raised concerns around scheduling the public hearings when people that are directly impacted have the most opportunity to participate, and not during the summer. But even your voices were ignored. Mr. Walker and Dr. Walters didn't even bother to check with you all to see if you could be available in such short notice. If members of this board are being ignored, why should families believe that their voices will be heard? This is the most difficult time of the year to change plans, especially with short notice. But because two people wanted to do what they wanted without care of the people that will actually suffer the consequences of their actions, your requests and the pleas of the community that you serve are being ignored. Once again, it's a shame that the rest of you that wanted to do this with more care have to sit here and deal with the fallout from a reckless decision spearheaded by the same people time after time. Furthermore, we're being asked to participate in public hearing part of this process without the information that we've been asking for. By the time the info is made available, the public hearings are going to be long over. We won't be able to ask those detailed questions and make informed comments the way that we actually should be. We have to rely on the very people that keep ignoring us to be our voices later. Jean, you may not care how, quote, "the sausage is made," as you put it, but that's because you aren't going to be eating it. None of the public that you're talking about, they're like, you don't have kids in the district, you're not a teacher, you're not a student. So stop ignoring the voices of directly impacted people. So if you do, then people saying they're going to do what they want to do anyways should be the new model of PPS, because students first always, and it always isn't.
Thank you for your testimony. And our next speaker is Lily Armman.
It's the exact opposite of how I'm feeling right now. I am mad. I have been disappointed for the past two years I've been speaking at these meetings. I and others have been sitting here, talking to you guys for so long, telling you why this idea was terrible and not good for the students, but you throw us away like we're an inconvenience to your evening. On the topic of inconveniences and terrible ideas, planning this many meetings with such short notice was not a good idea. You said the board members could make time to do this, but you gave it three weeks' notice over summer vacation for five days of meetings when a lot of people are traveling or doing other things like camps. Mr. Walker, you said if we really cared, we would figure out how to make it work. But when it came to schedule public hearings, where you could get the most community engagement, you didn't even try to make it work. Also, Mr. Walker, you scheduled these meetings without even checking with your fellow board members before you scheduled these meetings. Only you and the superintendent talked, which, for scheduling these meetings while not checking with the other board members and making it difficult to speak at these, is not the best decision. The three meetings I find the most important, I will most likely miss, because I will be at a mandatory overnight camp for an interest and a group I have and I am in. I am seriously starting to lose motivation taking time out of my day writing these testimonies and coming out here or hopping on virtually to talk to you just for you to ignore us. Please start listening and taking this seriously.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you for your testimony. And our next speaker is Michael Cummins.
Let's play pretend. Let's pretend that by November, when these votes are looking to be held, our administration has put together a comprehensive plan, one that did the long overdue work of actually detailing how this will drive equity, provide excellence, and do so efficiently. Been waiting 15 months, so let's pretend it'll all be there in a few months. So what we're looking at is at least an actual plan, not some half-baked attempt to address imagined financial distress magically converted into a plan about equity. Okay, we have a full plan, lots of field and details, et cetera. Board votes to pass it, now what? Here's the thing, you are all public servants. No matter how well-developed and thought-out this plan may get to be by November, if the community that it is supposed to be serving does not buy into it and the leader's enacting it, then that plan is destined to failure. There is no ifs, ands, and buts about it. This administration has burned all community trust by doing this plan backwards, not according to their own five-year framework, not at all focused on equity from the beginning, but trying to shoehorn equity into a plan that we all know was built around finances. ERS was hired to close a fiscal gap, not create equity. Equity magically appeared later when the plan didn't project significantly. The community does not trust this administration. Driving forward a plan they do not support will only cement this distrust and drive massive attrition and further distress for the entire district. The board rubber-stamping this poorly managed planning combined with community engagement charades that are badly masked smokescreens pretending to care what the community thinks, followed by immediately dismissing the input of that community as a loud few, while nobody knows where all these less-loud people are or what they're supposedly saying, has decimated the public's already shaky trust in this board. We haven't even addressed the staff. They're being told not to speak up. Kudos to those of you who still do. You cannot lead people who do not trust you. This plan, no matter how good it may turn out by November, will absolutely fail without community buy-in, just like the last four times we did almost the exact same thing. It'd only further hurt PPS. Insanity is repeating the same actions and expecting different results. Recognize that this is insanity. Change course now, try to start afresh in the fall, not the summer when families are away. This district can still regain our trust. Nothing that's happening right now is doing that. It is time to change course. We have to enact positive change with community buy-in. The rush to pass a half-baked, backwards plan without community support is an active choice to hurt, not to help, all the kids of PPS. We must do better for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And our last speaker this evening is Carrie Thompson.
Earlier this month, I attended the Community Kickback Conversation Event at Sunnyside. I encourage Pittsburgh families out there who haven't been following every twist and turn of the district's proposed changes for the 2026, 27 school year to attend one. Sometimes, participants can even get answers to their questions in real time from district administrative staff. These sessions are what should have been happening last school year. So I thank you for hosting these events, and yet I say strongly, they are not enough. To start with, they're happening over the summer when many families are out of town, as you've already heard. The district needs to hold more events like this after Labor Day, when school will be back in session, so families will be around. Additionally, these kickbacks are insufficient because they begin from a defensive posture by the district. They are far from an open exchange of ideas. Lamar Blackwell, the district chief of staff, opened the event by saying in part, quote, "We've listened to the community," end quote. But unfortunately, I don't see much evidence of that aside from a few small changes to the initial proposed set of closures. How many parents and community members have to tell you that they don't trust the district to be able to pull off this plan in one summer for you to believe us? What I heard at Sunnyside were families skeptical that this redesign can be accomplished in so many places at the same time, skeptical that it would result in all the desired promises of full-time specials teachers and after-school activities. How will you be able to transform all these schools to new configurations over the course of one summer? Why must you rush to try to do so? How many parents and community members have to ask, "How are you reaching out to Pittsburgh families not currently enrolled in PPS before you attempt to do so?" Our resources are limited as a district because too many families are choosing charter or private schools that pull money out of our public system. Ultimately, we won't be able to achieve the desired equity until families return to PPS. What would it take to do that, and how will you know? As our population continues to grow, why will families choose to reside in the city and not the suburbs based on having fewer schools available? Why are you still not involving teachers and paraprofessionals in this redesign of our schools? They are the experts in knowing what Pittsburgh students need. The success of any changes to our district will depend on their enthusiasm for a new program and their willingness to stay in PPS. Where are their voices? At the kickback, the district made a big deal about taking notes at the event. They said they will get back to us with questions, with answers to questions they didn't know in real time. I know I submitted several questions, and I have not heard anything back. Have others? Will I? I urge you to please slow down this process and do not vote to move forward with any building or school closures before the end of 2025. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.[1741.38]